May eighth, work session. All members present, Lisa Inzarella currently not here yet.
Yeah, Mr. Inzarella will might be attending the work session she called. She will be at the board meeting. Okay, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have site plans? Why don't we go to site plans first?
Good morning, I'm Peter Rahn, Assistant Planning Director. We have three site plans for the board to consider this afternoon, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review. The first one is the board that you see up on the easel. That's called 97 East Main Street. This is the north side of East Main Street, west of Belmeade Avenue. I believe it was once a sushi restaurant, Shiki. They're proposing a 478 square foot addition out the rear. You can see from the aerial photograph.
I'm lost.
Alright, sorry.
Maybe because I can't see very much.
A foundation was previously started in the rear. This will be going into the parking lot, the Belmeade parking lot, that's getting ready to break ground soon.
Near the wine guy?
Javier's is right here, the running store.
Totally, it's the sack of Belmeade.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, anyway, it was a, there was a foundation in place. This is site plan approval to basically construct the rest of the addition. Recommending approval with one condition, that they obtain applicable permits from the building department. They did receive a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the applicant is in agreement with the condition. Any questions?
When would they anticipate starting construction?
I think ASAP. They started the foundation.
They're in the ground already with it.
And the sanitation.
I'm just thinking if we're doing the construction on Belmeade.
Santy's done.
Okay.
Yeah, the sanitary system is out here. It's already installed. The foundation's installed, so they shouldn't be in the way.
Okay. If they start right away, by the time we get in there, it should be okay.
The next application is Gemini Pharmaceuticals. This went to the Board of Zoning Appeals as well. This is on the west end of the industrial park. It was actually, it's a legalization that was started due to complaints at one time regarding noise from the west. They went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They have some mechanical equipment on the exterior of the building. They obtained variances. In the meantime, it was discovered that there was paving and parking additions put on the west side of the building over here. It's shown here. So they're trying to legalize as well as upgrade the parking that's over here. We're recommending approval with five conditions. And the applicant is in agreement. I should've told you, it's northeast corner of Modular Avenue and Mall Drive in the industrial park. Anything, questions?
No, sir.
And the last application is Heartland.
Hit me with this thing again.
I apologize.
That's right.
Heartland Associates, this is the southwest corner of New Highway and Adams Avenue in Hopg. It's one of the last remaining vacant parcels in the industrial park. They're proposing a 58,500 square foot industrial building with site work. I forget the name of the tenant that's supposed to go in the building. I believe they're in the food business. This is the HBO property here, Viacom over here, New Highway up there. We're recommending approval with five conditions. The applicant is in agreement with them. I could go through the conditions if you would like, or...
Trust you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Nope, no, no.
Okay.
And they're in agreement?
They are in agreement, yes.
The SECRAs are on?
The SECR was adopted...
Last week.
Is on today, yes.
Today.
One of them has it already.
Yes.
And they're willing, they're looking to break ground immediately.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Now, question. Is there something going on at Edgewood, kind of type of a...
There is a, you're talking about the church?
I don't know, I don't know.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
There's a Board of Zoning Appeals hearing tonight for...
It's on tonight, for soccer field.
Yeah, with, the house, there was formerly a house on the south side of Edgewood. It was demolished by the town, maybe five years ago.
A long time ago, yeah.
With all the bamboo. It's adjacent to the former, to the Grace Church. However, it was purchased by the church across the street, which used to be the temple.
Yes.
And they're looking to use it for like an athletic field. And so they would need variances to utilize that. That's all I can really say, except that there's a hearing tonight toward Board of Zoning Appeals.
So they would want to make that a soccer field for their congregation?
For their church, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Supervisor, as you know, with the beginning of your administration on January 1st, you asked me to take care of all the land use departments. And I thank you for giving me the ability to do that. I must say, with your help, extreme help, and the member of all land use departments, they've been fabulous to work with. And I'd like to report to you, as of this one now, it's, we have 800,000 square feet currently under construction in the town. And we have a total of 1.2 million square feet with the pending applications. So that will increasingly enhance the taxable ratables for our fire, schools, town, everyone. So I want to thank you for your help, and thank all the members of the land use departments for all their help.
And I concur. Thank you very much for the cooperation. Things are moving on great, and good job, Mr. McCarthy also, in handling that.
Everybody's help, thank you.
Very good. We have one read on this afternoon. Does, everybody be aware of that? It's a equipment auctioned off. They want to just, some excess equipment that we're selling. So if we can read it on, we can, they can process that, and I guess they're going to use those funds.
Sounds good.
Alright. Anybody have a problem with that? Did everybody have it, or no?
Yes.
You do? Okay, very good. Mr. Musnug is here. Give us a financial report up to date for the first quarter. So, Mr. Musnug, would you come up, please? Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Donald Musnug. I'm the Town Controller and Budget Officer. And I'd like to bring you up to date on what's going on in the department, and also review the 2017 financial results and the first quarter results for 2018. Supervisor requested that I bring the entire town board up to date on these matters. I wanted to report to you that yesterday, the year-end fieldwork began for the independent audit. So Albrecht Vigiano came in, and they'll be here till around the end of July. And we expect the audited financial statements to come around, come out around the end of July and the middle of August. So that'll be done, and they're proceeding nicely. The annual update report was filed with the state of New York. Kathy Core works very hard on that, and she got it done timely and filed by May 1st. It was, in fact, filed a week early. This Wednesday, the supervisor, and myself, and Paul Rivano, and our UNstat advisor, Noah Adelson, will be meeting with Moody's at a telephone conference to evaluate our rating for this year. And this kicks off the busy season for my office. We have the operating budget. We're going to be sending out letters to the department heads to begin contemplating that. We met with the supervisor about this, and he's advised us on, you know, his thoughts on how he wants the managers of the directors of each department to proceed. We have to work on the capital budget. The board has requested that we have the capital budget simultaneously with the operating budget. And we will also be working on the fleet management with the automobiles, with John Gerlach, and we have a committee that we form on that. So, with that being said, I've given you two documents. The first has the blue on the left corner, and that's the operating results for 2017. And I have a written script as well, and then you can follow on this long sheet here. And let me go over the long sheet first with the numbers on it. That reflects the revenues on the left-hand side, the expenditures on the right-hand side, and the net number. So you'll see for the general fund, it's a million, almost a million one surplus for the year 2017 in the general fund. That was about $500,000 of operating surplus in the A general fund, operating surplus. And also in the parks, that's combined with the general fund, had also a $500,000 surplus. And that was mostly because of the, what do you call it? The flow density rights. Flow density rights came in very strong this year. Also, we have the Hornet Sawmill in that parks fund. And also there's the actual park fund where contractors contribute to that. And that has about 272,000 in it. The flow density rights have about $301,000, so...
272 is in the park fund, that present?
Yeah. And so, the total results for the A fund was a million 067. And most of that was attributable to the mortgage recording tax. That came in $875,000 over budget. So it was 4.2 million. We had budgeted 4 million, and it came in at about 4.8 million.
Sold more houses.
Yeah. And so in 2018, which I'll get to later on a little bit, we did increase the mortgage recording tax for the 2018 budget to 4.6 million. So we still, we're somewhat conservative.
Right.
And I'll have a surprise for you on that. The B fund...
Read it already.
Yeah, good. To me, it was a shocker. But the B fund, which is another general fund, but it's outside village fund, that had a $534,000 surplus for the year. And the revenues were favorable by, had revenues of 8.18 million 200,000 dollars, and expenditures were 7.7 million, resulting in the $534,000 favorable result. Some of that has to do with compensation and things of that nature. And revenues, building fees came in very strong. Building department fees came in very strong in 2017. The only one is highway here. The DA fund, which is the highway administration fund, that came in at about a $704,000 surplus. And that was combined also with the snow fund, the highway snow fund. The snow fund had a deficit of 216,000 dollars, while the DM fund had about a million dollar surplus in it. And that was because of a transfer that came in from the A fund. According to accounting standards, we had to recognize the transfer of $800,000 of capital funds as revenue. So that made the DM fund look very good.
What's a DM stand for?
It's the maintenance account.
DM, and maintenance.
Right.
And DS?
DS is snow.
I knew that.
Yeah. The DR fund, that had a 2.4 million dollar deficit. However, there's a big asterisk there. $600,000 was planned to be a deficit. And $2 million was an allocation of capital funds for Lake Avenue. So actually, we came in about $170,000 to the positive, better than what we had expected. So, beginning of the year, we anticipated a $600,000 use of fund balance. We only used about 430 of it. And then we also allocated $2 million during the year that we didn't anticipate during the budget for funds to be used for Lake Avenue. And we all know the status of that project. The capital funds, I don't think there's any really need to discuss that. The risk management funds, on that, those risk management funds is basically our unemployment, our liability account, workers' compensation, and health insurance. So that's running at a million dollar deficit. However, it was anticipated to use approximately a million dollars worth of funds to balance off those accounts. But I will say that we're getting right-sized on those fund balances. So what will happen in the future is we won't be able to use that surplus that's in there. And we'll have to charge each of the departments and funds the proper amount, the full amount of the costs for liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, and health insurance costs.
I think that's prudent.
Yeah. What happened was there was built up over the years, surpluses in those risk accounts. And it's prudent to have surplus in there, but not to the extent we did. So we were using that to supplement the taxes.
Right.
Okay. The lighting district, that one had a $164,000 deficit, but I think that's an anomaly. It's an extremely well-managed district, but they had overtime, excessive overtime this time, because we did the LED light installation. So, and that actually saved us money, because instead of using outside contractors, I know that Mr. Crowley was using internal staff. And it actually resulted in a savings to the town.
It cost us less to do it that way.
That's exactly right, Supervisor. So grand total, which really doesn't matter too much, it was a million 700,000 dollar surplus for the year. And the rating agency principally looks at the A fund. And in that regard, you know, I anticipate that our results this year will be favorable as well when we go for them. So that's 2017. 2018, the first quarter concluded. And over the past, let me, yeah, over the past three years, our department has developed certain schedules that we keep throughout the months and maintain throughout the year. And it provides an indication of where we stand as compared to the budget. So it's not finite, and it's always moving. So first quarter is very preliminary, but the mortgage recording tax, if you turn to the second page and turn it sideways. Every month, we get a message from Suffolk County as to how much they collected in mortgage tax. And the second column that's shaded shows, you'll see January, $406,000. That's our portion of the mortgage tax that our town gets to keep. $412,000 in February, and March, $548,000. For a total of $1,366,000. And as I mentioned earlier, the budget is 4.6 million. So we still have to receive 3.2 million. But if the remaining mortgage tax comes in at the same pace as last year, with the same amounts, we'll be $275,000 to the surplus. Which is surprising to me, because I fully expected with interest rates rising and lack of inventory of houses, that the mortgage tax would go down. But I think it's being compensated by the higher sales prices of the houses.
I think the lack of inventory is pushing people out there to buy more.
Yes, exactly right, Councilwoman.
Yeah.
It still has historically low rates, which is really driving people.
Yeah.
As they're going up, they're going to the market.
Yep.
Well, they're afraid every time the fact goes on the radio.
Exactly. And so at the bottom, it shows the first quarter, we brought in 1.3 million. And the prior year, which again, that was also a very high year, 1.1 million. So we're $200,000 or 17% better than the prior year.
Those mortgage taxes, those also, people that are refinancing their own mortgage for lower rates.
Oh, yes.
Those are also mortgage tax, so it's not just sales of homes.
Right.
You're exactly right.
And people are, let's do it now before they raise the rates.
Most people have, you know, I absolutely agree.
I think there's a lot of that also.
Yeah, and I mean, a lot of people have already refinanced, you know, when the rates went down, but still, that, it's an ongoing process.
And that's not cheap, those mortgages, that mortgage tax.
No, it's not cheap.
I know, tell me about it.
I know. The next couple of pages I'll go over with you, it requires some explanation. The first column is the fund balance, which is pretty much actual from the AUD that Kathy did. And then the second column shows the tax levy, that's right from our budget. And then we have budgeted other revenues, which are various types of revenues that we take in. And the adjusted budgeted total revenue is, you'll see, 45 million. That's adding the two columns together. Minus the adjusted expenses gives us the net results for 2018. And this is a projection for the year-end, so it's not just the first quarter operations. It's projected for the year-end. And we do that by looking at the, we have a very elaborate schedule that has all the expenditures on it. And we choose every item over $25,000, and then we extrapolate that to see if it's going to, you know, why there's a variation. Is it accurate? You know, why is it, what is the variance? Is it going to hold? Is it seasonal? Or what the reason is? We also, I also track every personnel change and project out what the impact is on the budget for promotions, terminations, retirements, and also the use of all contingency funds. We track all of that. And so that's what results in what we project to be the changes in expenditures and revenue. So for the general fund, we're projecting a $442,000 surplus for 2018 at this point. The outside village general fund, that's going to be a modest, it should be break even. I mean theoretically, you would think that all budgets should be break even, you know, the revenue raise, but you know, it doesn't come out that way. And you do try and not build up too much surplus. We're trying to, you know, and last year, I think Supervisor Vecchio and the town board had put in a break even budget, you know, no tax increase budget last year. So, but you know, we have to be very vigilant throughout the year. This is only the beginning of the year, and there's been a lot of maintenance items that we're working on, some deferred maintenance that was out there that the supervisor and the board members have been very eager to remedy. And so we have to be very cautious on our expenditures for 2018. The highway fund is not doing well. And that's mostly due to the snow that came out. And you know, again, we did budget again for a $600,000 use of fund balance in 2018. Again, that's going to be narrowing down. Their fund balance is about 2.7 million dollars. So you can see that gradually, you're going to whittle that down, and you know, we're going to have to probably see a tax increase in that line. But in any event, yeah, we're projecting between 200,000 to 300,000 dollar deficit in the snow fund.
In the snow fund.
And Supervisor, you were very wise in the beginning to ask me to keep you up to date. You must have had a premonition that it was going to be a lot of snow this year.
It was just coming that way. It came quickly, too.
That's for sure.
And they were, you know, they were very frugal with the way they handled the overtime. We hadn't, we never pulled the villages for any of the three storms. We did it a little bit of a different method, but...
Lot of it was sand and salt.
Yeah, it's material.
Material they had to put down.
Yeah. Well, a lot of it wasn't even high snow, it was just a little garbage.
Icy, yes.
But you know what? That's what we're in business for, to take care of people and they'll save the other roads. And that's, sometimes that's a deficit.
It's our basic duty, isn't it?
That's what we need to do.
The solid waste residential district is again experiencing a positive result of $30,000. And one of the things that is chewing up some of the budget this year are employee severance pay, you know, payouts from their severing relations. Yeah, their accruals, that is costing money. The water district is positive $80,000. The country club is positive $30,000, projected for the year. So we should be overall, just about a break even, $150,000 surplus for the year. But again, the overall total doesn't matter too much. It's the individual funds, the rating agencies, and that's how you compute your taxes. So that's the status. I would say that we're, 2017 was a solid year. I think 2018 is very preliminary. The supervisor's asked us to keep an eye on everything, and we'll do so.
And we have the union contracts as well. We have a committee assigned. We've met with the negotiators, so we'll be, I'll keep the board informed as we move forward with that. Again, any suggestions for the new contracts for both the Administrators Guild and CSEA and Harton, please forward them to Ivy Tropia. She's going to compile them, and then when the committee's ready, they'll let us know, and then they'll begin negotiations.
Don, what's the target, mostly for rating agencies and also for running the town? What's your target for a fund balance at the end of the year? What do you strive for as what you feel is, is safe, is good for a town, puts us in good stead? What's the number?
Glad you brought that up, Councilwoman. Well, I think, well, school districts are under a mandate to have, I believe, no more than 10 to 15% of their expenditure budget.
4%.
4%, which is ridiculously, in my opinion ridiculously low. However, that's the state controller. And in the schools, I think a lot of school districts have been ignoring that, and they have far more than that. You know, you have to be prepared when there's a hurricane. You have to be prepared when there's pollution remediation.
I'm big on fund balance, but go ahead.
Yeah, and, but you don't want too much, because you are holding the taxpayers' money. And you have to be careful, if you are going to use fund balance, if you announce it ahead of time to the rating agencies, they understand if you've been accumulating too much fund balance. I think that we're not accumulating too much fund balance. We, I don't want to accumulate very much more, but I don't think we want to dip into our fund balance unless we need to do so. And currently...
So at the end of the year, 2018, what would be your desire? What do you think would be...
I'd love to be right where we're at now. That's 20 million, 20 million 500,000 dollars for the A fund.
And that's there for emergencies and...
No, I think it's 40%. It's 40% of revenues and annual basis, 40% of annual expenditures and revenues. It's a bit high, but not anywhere near as high as some of our contemporary towns on the island.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. But it's also very much stronger than some of our contemporary towns nearby.
What do you mean it's stronger?
Well, I mean, there are some towns that have a deficit, you know, deficit fund balance, or they've been borrowing, you know, again, our borrowings are very low relative to other towns. We're the lowest, except for Shelter Island.
They borrowed to run the town instead of paying as you go. And basically sooner or later, their residents are going to get clobbered.
For sure. One of the things that we have been doing, though, is utilizing fund balance for one-time capital expenditures, which is a wise way to do it. Because you're not using, this town board has not been using their fund balance to supplement, by and large, operations.
Operations, right.
We assess the people, the residents and businesses, the taxes that are appropriate for the use of the funds. Every so often, you need to have a large capital expenditure, for example, Lake Avenue, potentially sewer system. You would use some fund balance, and the rating agencies knows that, because it's not on an ongoing basis. It's just a one-time shot.
Now, the fund balance sits in there, it's taxpayers' money, obviously. So that's not money that we invest?
We do earn interest. In fact, last year, interest ran rather strong compared to what the budget was for, because interest rents went from a half a percent to as high as, well, the end of last year, 2%. So we're getting, you know, one and a half to 2% at most of our banks now. And they edged it up, the banks did.
They did?
Yes, they did, yeah. But we, you know, you can't, there's a term called arbitrage, and we do keep an eye on that. We monitor, you know, the results that, especially with, on borrowed funds, you know, you can't borrow at 2% and invest it at 4%. That's the definition of arbitrage.
Borrow at 2, invest at 4.
Yeah, you would like to do that, but the government, the government doesn't allow you to do that.
So the 20 million does make a little bit of interest through the banks. Of course, not through stocks or things like that, but the banks pay interest, and it sits there.
All of our funds are collateralized at 105%. So there's... So there's collateral being posted up by the banks, each one, that collateralize it by 105%. So our, the taxpayers' money are, is safe and sound and.
So if you invest 10 million in Chase, say?
Yes.
The backup bank is one other bank or a few other banks or?
We have, we have a total of, I believe, seven banks that we operate right now and we've had a host of other banks that supervisor's urging. I met with about five or six other banks that are eager to do business with us. And we haven't opened it up yet, but it is on our agenda to, we've interviewed them, but we have to meet with the supervisors as the chief fiscal officer and see which banks he would like us to entertain.
And you spend the money around to the different banks?
Yeah, yeah. The banks are appreciative because that's the money that they loan out to their customers.
And it sits, that money sits there for a long time.
No, some, a dozen, some doesn't. Our main operating bank, we keep extra funds in there.
What's our main operating?
The Chase bank is, that's our.
That's right. That's the black box, that's the.
And they've done a good job for us over the years and there are other banks that we have planted money there and it remains. First National Bank of Long Island is a bank that we have some funds in, Empire Bank and others.
Again, we're not decreasing services by paying loads of interest the way we run the town. Well, the towns decrease services because they're paying so much interest to run their towns. So we're able to actually give people a real bang for their buck.
For sure. On the other hand, you know, you, unlike people, individuals who have a limited time span and a limited lifespan and want to, at the time of their, at the time of their exit, want to have all their debts paid off. A township is an ongoing life that never ends. And so, you know, the future taxpayers need to contribute as well as the current taxpayers. If you get everything all paid off at one time, then, you know, you've burdened the current taxpayer overly.
Yeah. And they took care of it, not the future taxpayers.
Right. So I like to encourage the board to borrow at a regular level so that you're not deferring any maintenance, you're not, you know, and you're taking care of the problems that occur. You know, deterioration, new, new buildings and new things that have to take care of, renovations, new trucks, current state of the art equipment. I think it's prudent to do that.
Well, and just for everybody else, every place I go with constituents, they're loving the parks being, I always say it, parks, beaches, sidewalks, they're loving the parks being fixed. That's, that's quality of life.
Yes. And we are in an affluent community and it's traditionally, and I know it still is, we always keep a close eye on our taxes and on expenditures, but I think that the residents are demanding of good beaches and good roads, good services.
Yeah, if we can't do that.
And I know that's your philosophy.
It is. And you did a great job, Don. Thank you.
Don, thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right. The, do, does the board have an interest in the, that proposal for that Blues Festival this fall? Want me to begin dealing with the other departments to come up with what would be necessary and some kind of an estimate on expenditures in the event that we authorize it?
Where's that going to be?
Long Beach.
It's a nice festival, like you said. You've got to negotiate the expenditures. It just can't be.
One night, or tell me a little about it?
It's in September. I think there was something sent around, it's sometime after Labor Day.
It's a couple of days, I believe, over the weekend.
I think it's over weekend. It's a, some, it's an entertainment group that has done them all over the place, so they want to come to Long Beach.
Get that in Brookhaven or someplace.
I think they might have.
Brookhaven, I think Northport does it.
Northport does it?
Yeah, I think so.
It might be something very nice, just that I just want to know if the board wants me to move forward, I'm going to have.
The more of that stuff, the better.
I'm interested.
I'm going to have the permanent department start coming back with the report. Let them start doing some estimates on what will be necessary. We have to contact the villages, et cetera, so.
And we've gotten calls for car shows there, actually boat shows there, other stuff that can.
Boat shows? That would be great. Not them buying a boat.
But it's just.
But that's the place to have a boat show, at the beach.
Okay. I'm going to, I'll take care of that. That's all I have, other than executive session matters with the town attorney.
Just executive.
Just no?
Executive.
Executive, yeah.
Okay. Then I will move to go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Don. Good. All right, I move to close executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to close the work session for today?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Time for coffee.